Let the record show that all commissioners present, please stand for the great reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your authority for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can let us stand up.
All right, we're going to come back to number four at the end. Let's move the one, the five first. Discuss possible action regarding capitalizing expenses, office equipment, 1,421, and 6810 for the 8th district court.
Send the budget, motion approved.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Item seven, discuss possible action regarding the following budget amendments request, 8th district court, $2,000, 8th district court, $2,000, purchasing 1,400, purchasing 1,000.
That's all going to office supply, right?
Yes.
Motion approved.
There's a motion, a second. Any question, any discussion? Not all of them in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Item seven, discuss possible action regarding the following budget amendments request, 8th district court, $2,000, 8th district court, $2,000, purchasing 1,400, purchasing 1,000.
That's all going to office supply, right?
Yes.
Right? Motion approved.
There's a motion, a second. Any question, any discussion? Not all of them in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, 5-0.
The point in saving money on the coffee room is actually saving money. Not to move it somewhere else.
I mean, not needed. That was just in case.
Item eight, discuss possible action regarding the contract or extension on the community center.
Last week, I went back and forth trying to, to secure payment bond for the contract, and the contractor, the only contractor that bided on the project, pretty much came back and said they weren't going to be able to get a performance bond. So I told him that therefore I have to present it to the court and, and see what decision they come up with, if we're going to, whatever we're going to do.
I don't think you can proceed without a performance bond. Because if they go under halfway through the project, then we have no repercussion.
That's correct.
I think the best thing to do is go out and...
Rebid it.
Rebid it.
Make a motion to deny the contract and authorize to rebid.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item nine, discuss possible action on entering into agreement with Spy Class Group LLC to conduct a telecommunications service audit.
This company, their expertise is going in, looking at your communication budgets, phones, cell phones, and internet, and just see, they'll review it, audit it, make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to get in our credit. There's no money for, for their audit. If they, on line two, their fees, if they find savings, that's the different, that's the breakdown on their terms on what type of savings that they can find for us. If it's reoccurring, then there's one set of terms. If it's a one-time, there's a different set of terms. If, and only if, the court decides to move forward with any of their alterations.
After their audit.
Right.
So the audit would be a good thing, and then we figure out which way we want to move.
Motion approved.
Second. A motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. And item 10, discuss possible action regarding the satellite phone renewal service contract.
These are for the...
Yes. It's something we did last year.
Are those phones working on Craig here? Or sorry, I'm not going to show them.
Yeah.
Those satellite phones, are they working all right?
No, it don't work, period. I've only got out one time on it. You go work in the truck, you have to get out, hold it up, and turn around like this, and you might get sick. Excuse me, sir.
What's your recommendation on this contract renewal?
I just do not have that one. That one is hard to deal with. It's not working.
Can we, you have two of them?
Mm-hmm.
Two. You have both of them? He has both of them.
No, he doesn't have both of them. Somebody else has.
Where's the other one?
I think, uh...
Sure?
No.
You don't have one?
I thought it was, uh...
Roland, I know, Roland.
Roland has.
Oh, Roland has one.
Well, they ain't working, they ain't working.
No, they ain't working.
This is the first time I hear that they're not working.
So I don't know how we could renew if they're not working. Does Roland's work?
No.
Then motion to deny the contract and authorize you to go find a...
One that works.
Another supplier.
Find one that works.
There's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. All right, let's go back to item number four, discuss the possible, thank you, Mr. President. Discuss the possible action on the budget workshop for fiscal year fiscal.
That's fiscal. Because she just walked in.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And the reason I put this one there, because I know that Commissioner Middleton, before he even wanted to discuss the budget, he wanted to make sure that all the special account reports or audits were in, and...
Have we got all of the special account budgets?
No.
When are we expecting them? It's hard for us to do this budget without knowing what those are.
I don't know if they've been notified by turning them in, but that's a ton.
Most, most people turn them in as part of the budget process. Unless they're unidentified public special accounts which came up with the audit, but we all turn in our budgets.
So they're all in?
They should be. We turn them in with the budget.
So we need to go through and create those, or we can start working on a budget. For those funds. And you have the list from the attorneys of which ones that we have say so and which ones we don't? You got the report, right? And then, I don't know if y'all want to discuss this budget, but I have questions. When I look at this, it looks like we're about 1.8 million out of balance. We're balancing it by using reserves and carryovers from line items and stuff like that. And can you, or somebody explain why? Because I've been doing this for 16 years, and I've never seen once that we had an effective rate higher than our current rate. And it's higher by about 4 cents.
I looked at the formula, and I got lost.
I got lost.
Matt was really trying to do a good job explaining to me, but I got lost.
So your effective rate is, the property last year, that same property being taxed in this current year, is taking out new builds, is taking out property that came off. It's taken out the frozen values. It is taking out the values that were lost, not from previous year, but before the previous year, and beyond. So it takes out all of those values, and it is just a formula. I didn't create the formula.
No, no, I understand that.
But that is, is how the formula works.
So you back out all of the...
There is 10 adjustments that happen inside the formula. Five for prior year and five for present.
And then you take out the new builds, you take out the contested, and then you put them back in at some point, I'm assuming?
The contested does come back in, but only when you're figuring the ratio.
And the new bills, they come back in?
No, the new builds are kept off, because they were not part of the tax rule in the prior year. So they're...
And we don't tax the new bills?
We do tax the new bills, but the effective tax rate is comparing last year to this year. That's all it is. It's comparison, and it's a formula.
But then you have additional revenue on the new bills.
Yes, you do.
So, so you are generating additional revenue?
On the new bills, yes, you are.
Okay.
But as far as the effective tax rate formula, it is not a variable.
So then what is the, the, what is the amount we're generating on the new bills, or you backed out?
Well, we can figure that out. We have about 26 million on new bills. Twenty-six billion.
Billion or billion?
Billion. There would be a difference, right?
Yeah, that's a big difference. So, but your overall add-on tax, you're going to generate more money than you did last year, simply because you're adding back those pieces.
Right.
Because last year you had 9,675,000. This year we're proposing 9,877,000, which is not, you know, a couple hundred thousand, hundreds and...
Hundreds and more.
Yes, hundreds and seven thousand, and we're going to generate additional revenue. And then, all of your additional fees, which I see you've reduced most of them...
Correct.
Because, but I did notice in VP precinct three, you used the same 120.
Yeah, that's where revenues are projected to come in.
But we're anticipating that revenues should drop this year, aren't we?
We are, but for some reason, um...
I mean, this coming year, I mean, not this year.
The revenue that she is continuing to be able to generate is still hitting her budget. The other ones are falling off, and what is the positive?
And even with all of them...
So that's just the budget line, but the budget, it could have been on her budget in the prior year.
No, no, I understand. Let's still put this 1.8 million short.
It does.
And then this does not take into account the shortfall in front there.
No.
This budget.
It does not.
It has 325,000 of it, 367,000 out of the possible $2 million shortfall.
Right.
Correct.
Which then generates us a, about a $4 million shortfall.
I told you it could get worse.
And, and the revenues, Commissioner, just, the revenues that were projected, even those, I think, some of them, and we've had this conversation with Matt, I know that Matt's gone through, and we've actually added two previous years in this year, and went did, went through, and divided that out. But I think even those are going to be, even with all the work Matt did, they're still going to be overstated, maybe about hundreds and more than $1,000 when we get done. Just, if we just went by what we're collecting this year. I mean, Matt actually did a lot more work than I did, but I think they're going to be off, probably about hundreds and more than $1,000 still, on the revenue side.
So to bring this budget to balance, we need to either cut or raise.
Well, there's, I don't see how that you can cut 1.8, but...
What's the total cost of our pay raises?
254,000.
And if you did a 5% of cost of board cut out of operating, what would be the save?
You got a sheet, Mike?
I do.
Oh, I know you got the sheet.
Seven million in operating.
Seven million is your operating cost?
Right, so a 5% cut would be 350,000.
The board temp?
Temp's only 700,000.
I think that's too much.
And then you're still 1.1.
Matt, that line you created for 910 dollars, or are we including anywhere on this budget? I mean, as to...
It's, it's coming in as revenue.
As revenue.
As revenue. And when you do all that, Commissioner, it gets worse, because the 910, you can't, and we've had this conversation. Well, I mean, I think I need to see what's coming in.
But you've got the 910 plus the 6.
Correct. That was the 1.5 million that I pointed out the last meeting that we had.
So out of your 1.8, that's where 1.5 of it comes from?
Yes.
And down on the bottom, bottom of the page, where it has a 1.1, 1.1, whatever.
Eight.
Yeah, 1.8, and you notice the raises, and then he, he actually went through and already put in the tax increase.
Can you bring that up a little bit, Matt, so they can see that?
Just a bit better, I'm sorry, I laid it in wrong.
Like that?
Yeah, just like that, so they can see that. And the cuts that Commissioner Middleton, that you'd said, the five, and then Commissioner Frotas actually brought up 10, those, just with those three things, doing that, we're up close to that top.
You're close to that one.
You get close, but you, like you said a little while ago, Commissioner Middleton, we haven't done it on that road, and when you do the five, the six something, and the 910 that Gus just brought up, and what we've done, we're still, it's still bad.
What would we ever want sent in recent tax?
It's just a little over 200,000.
Well, but when you do the calculations, the 93% collection rate that we usually do, it's about 193,000. And I, and I know, you're going to say, well, we can do the 97 if we collect it, but we've always based it between 92, 93%. We don't have any delinquency on that one cent for a couple of years before we can make it up to 97.
It would probably be just 96 or 97, 73.
That's what got us in trouble two years ago. And we've had this conversation, I'm not arguing with you, okay, but I told you I was going to bring it up.
I already brought it up with you. That 97 got us in trouble. So this turns, this current rate, you're figuring 97%, this 910?
It is, and then that's a high back going to 4,000, 4,000 something. Now, the 97 is the total.
Yes, sir.
So let's not confuse that.
Yeah, yeah, the delinquent plus.
Yeah, current plus delinquent, you can use whatever.
But you're not going to have any delinquency on that 1% that you raised for a couple of years anyway.
You wouldn't have any delinquency?
Well, not to matter. Not when you're, not to figure in the 97. Right now, if you look at our add-on Laura for the previous years, we had 9 million something, and then our delinquencies were 3, 400,000. So the little, the little bit that you're going to have delinquency on...
Oh, on the right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
All right, Matt, on that front, we don't have to find the money this year, all of it, we're going to go back and forth.
Right, okay. No, I don't...
No, I'm telling you, that's what the tech stock said. We don't have to do all the 1.8.
The problem with that is...
We don't have to do it all, but the problem is, we got to send them a letter that says we have the funding.
Right. And you, I think that maybe the, the meeting that we had with tech stock that y'all met with them first, and then we met with them later on, the bottom dollar was at 1.8, and I think, Judge, you brought up another couple hundred thousand, and then Commissioner Middleton brought up that we were missing some other pieces also that might kick us up a little bit more.
About 2.1.
And that was just on low dollars.
See, I've got concerns about 110, 910, and the 600,000, and using it as an operating. I know we've done it in the past, but...
So the other option would be to leave it there and lower the pennies and keep the pennies in the general fund, and then you're looking to do the loan transfer. You could easily do that.
And then it's going to bite you in the butt next year.
Where you just have to raise, lower GF and raise INX.
Yeah, next year you're going to have to reverse it back.
Yeah, I, I mean, the whole thing is to try to fix it. There's only a couple ways to do it. You either, you cut or you raise. You either cut your expenses or you raise your revenue. And in this place, like the point now, that you're probably going to have to do both.
It's right, it is quite a gap, you have to do both, but let's not, you know, we don't need to try to fix it in one year. This is something that, that we can take a couple steps, as long as we are committed to conservatism and bringing it forward, to slowly build that fund balance back up.
And I know that next year, we should, the wind farm should be online, and there should be some additional.
It should, and, and I know that, that the court doesn't necessarily want to have to balance, use the wind farm to balance our budget, but we do have to be conscious that we do have more revenue coming in, that that's no excuse for not being conservative on revenue. And the revenue will, the revenue will fall off.
And that's what... You brought up today, Commissioner, I think you were in that 20% range, and Matt actually looked it up, the wind farm and bracket, lost 22% of its value in five years. So I mean, if we're balancing our, if we, if we use the concept, the perception, or we try to balance our budget next year with the wind farm and say it's coming in, all it's going to do is dig us a deeper hole over the next four or five years.
Oh, it will, it just, we can, what, what I was more projecting is we could use that to re-establish our reserves, not so much count on expenditures, but if we had to utilize some of the reserves in this year's budget, we could take that additional revenue next year and we increase our reserves, not necessarily use it to balance the budget, but get our reserves back up to where they need to be.
Right, and it wasn't, it was, our valuations did go down this year, which from my understanding is that's pretty rare.
Yes.
So our valuations did go down.
Matt, what were the two pipelines coming in? What were they in?
I don't have any information on the value of them yet.
Two big pipelines.
They're going to be basically valued at the same as the other two, they're just going to improve, so those numbers should be close.
We collect about 160, 170,000 dollars left on us. Is that right?
177, yeah, off the pipelines.
Off of the two?
Off the one we have now. The one that's going in right now, and we figured the TRIS off of that.
Which brings up a whole nother conversation on TRIS. When you read the terms of that TRIS, that money is only supposed to be allowed to be spent in the areas where the pipelines are, or the TRIS is created. Correct?
That's what I read also.
But we're using it countywide.
Only in the near term. So Louis is going to pave his road?
Well, the thing is, it isn't all mine.
It falls, the, the pipeline falls between precinct three and precinct two, but we're using the money in all four precincts. But when you read the, what it says, it's supposed to only be used within the bounds of that area.
We had that conversation too, right, Matt?
You know, we need to, we need to straighten those things out.
Now, Matt, if we go up to the effective tax rate, 3.9, you can only generate 810?
Roughly, 810. It's going to be a little more than that, but that was just...
But the 810 that you're saying, not, not all of it goes back, that, that's at the 3.9.
Right.
And then when you take out the, you do the 93% collection rate or something, what we're actually going to put in our budget. And we, and we argue all day long, we're doing 93, that's, I mean, we can't do the 97.
I mean, I think we have to look at some cuts in this year's budget, but I also want to look at the special fund budgets as part of this. And I think we need to start having discussions about 5% cuts and possibly no new employees, and maybe there's no pay raises, or cut the amount that we're giving out for pay raises.
Why don't, uh, why don't we start somewhere? I mean, if, I think we'd all love to give pay raises, but I think if we took them out to begin with, we have a number with which to work with, and then we start backing stuff out, and come to a point that maybe we can give it. But take them out right now, that way we're getting closer to...
Can you do a sheet like this, bringing in a 5% cut out of the general fund operating? Show what those numbers look like? Do a five and a 10.
Just reduce it by 350.
Yeah. He did the 10 already up there. Those are...
Says what?
You can expand those numbers?
Which one?
Oh, the whole one?
Yeah, he can lower the deals where they get bigger. No, down at the bottom, your raises, right, where you, the cuts? You wanted the cuts, where you see the, yeah. Just, can you push that down to where they get bigger?
Oh, sure. I'll get that straight first.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
You can see. I thought you were the judge here for a little bit.
I got my speed on that. I got my speed.
I mean, I, I think we need to start somewhere and start taking a little bit of action. Either we, we cut the raises out completely right now, and then later on, if we get to where the special funds and we get all that done, if there's room to put it back in, we put it back in, but you've got to start somewhere.
You have to do at least a 5% cut, take the raises out for now, and then, we got to get those special fund budgets, because I don't know what they look like.
Who would keep those special fund budgets? Weren't they...
No idea. Years before, they were all turned into the auditor, so I don't know.
They were turned into the auditor?
But we had passed an order that all special fund budgets should meet the same format as our current budget, so the same line items and all that need to be within those budgets.
So it cannot just be a collapsed revenue expenditures?
It has to be broken. That's the order that we have.
And so, operating?
Operating, and payroll, if they have any travel, training, capital, all that stuff.
And these are just their estimates?
Yeah, I mean, they need to, you know, we need the total amount of revenue that they're projecting, the total amount of money they have available, and then the budget of how they intend to spend it.
All right.
And then we can go through and make adjustments however we see fit, but, in those funds that we have control over.
Okay.
Matt, you said you can't do this all at once.
You don't have to do all that.
All right, if we're, if we're up, if we go like, forward like we're talking, how long will it take?
Right, it depends on how fast you want to get there. If you want to try to do it all in one year, then do it in one year.
No raises, 5% cut?
And then maybe next year, there can be a chance of, of no raises, and maybe keeping the budgets at the same, because they would be cut 5%, so keeping that budget at the same, and then at that point, we would have the additional revenue come in, along with an increase in appraisal values, hopefully, and then we can start adding back to get to that point.
Yeah, and I want to look at that, I want to look at the special fund budget, so that we can, you know, and, and like Commissioner Owen said, once we look at those special funds, we may be able to put some of this back in, I don't know. We may or may not, I don't know.
I still have an issue with the 910 being part of our revenue, and that 606 being part of our revenue. I mean, and I, I think with what we've just done, we're trying to get there, but I think after we look at everything, I hate saying it, but they're probably still going to need a bit of a taxing piece also. There you go. That's more, that's better. The excess of revenue and expenses, everything's in, in a little bracket.
It is, but, so our, the fees and the taxes that we, that county generates does not cover the current operating expenses, or even payments and interest and sinking.
No, no, you're, you're, you're penny off in interest and sinking, Mr. Thomas, the budget, and that's if you take out the line of credit and, and take out the loo, you're still short in revenue.
Correct, it's, it is taken out of there, if you look at that, 31, that is, current income versus current expenses.
Yeah, you're short in interest and sinking, you're short in road and bridge.
And...
And in general funds.
And I was mentioning to the sheriff and his chief a little while ago, you know, I think, how did we get there? When we ended up getting our audit, for our 2016 audit, we'd had 1.9 million in our general fund that we were starting our budget off with, our beginning cash balance.
Yes.
Uh, that money was not there.
Correct.
And, and when you look at it, with it not being there, I mean, we were already a million, I think a million two, a million three in the hole, pretty much, and, and you were already using your excess, your beginning cash balance, again, like this one, like we having, having to do here, is your revenues were less than your expenses already in, in this year's, this year's budget, and then when you take away another 1.2 million that we didn't have to start off with, that's how come we're here.
Mike, what do you mean it wasn't there?
Uh, there were some encumbrances, I think, is what we might have come up with.
Yeah, the cash balance was just simple projection. It was, this is our cash balance, and this is what we projected to be 30 days from now.
Yeah, so instead of being 1.9, you were closer to 600.
But don't they close the books on such a much burden?
You should try. Go ahead. Yes, they do, we do close the books, but coming into passing the budget, we were estimating what that figure was going to be, because the budget had to be passed in September before the books were closed.
Well, I don't know. Frank used to make us stop spending August 30, at the end of August.
We used to, we used to budget freezes in July and August, and that's how we were able to accumulate that, that reserve and that cash.
And, and me and Matt, I, Commissioner... Martin, you even bit newer in there this past week also.
I don't, God, I hate saying this, but I don't think that at the rate we're going, if everybody uses their funds that are, that they're projected to, that they can use, I don't think we have enough money to function the rest of the year without being real creative
I don't think we have enough money to function the rest of the year without being real creative with the 910 or something else.
Yeah, without being creative with the 910, probably not. You're right. Uh, but right now, we do have $3.8 million in savings from unspent encumbrances. However, the bad news is about 1.5 of that is gonna be your salaries. So that leaves us with roughly 2.5, 2.3 in savings from encumbrances if, if, if everything was frozen. However, the bad news is our revenue is $2.4 million has not come in yet. Now, 910 is almost 1 million of that. So we need to make that decision on what we're gonna do there. But once we do that, there's a possibility we're 1.5 below projections. And we will, we still have fees and taxes that will continue to roll in at a trickle rate for these next few months.
You're, you're.
When do we freeze the budget?
That's, that's not my decision.
Well, no, it is your decision.
You just make a recommendation.
Our, our numbers, uh, and we had $2,869,988 in the end of, the end of July, our ending cash balance. I backed out the $38,000 or whatever, whatever the money was in the past. We had $2,860,000. When I ran off the expenses, I paid 25, uh, $2,904,000. And you look at your other sheet, you bring your, or you look at your other sheet on your revenues and altogether revenues were $6,609,000 is what I come up with. And I took out some of this stuff, I, I didn't went on percentage. And I, no, you don't wanna do that, but I went on percentage as to what they've collected. And if you add another two months to it, this is what it's gonna be.
Okay.
And my numbers, Matt, uh, we're $361,475 in the negative you get done. And I brought another list of stuff that I was gonna go over with you that, and I think one of them was $500,000 that you had told me on the non-departmental. There was, right, there was like $700 some odd dollars for insurance or something. You said only about $500, so that's added to that. And I understand after you do that, $800 some odd thousand dollars that were gonna be in the negative. According to my numbers, you have some numbers that you can bring back because we still need to get reimbursed with, with the Westgate. The problem is, is that when we go to use that money to fill this hole in, if we don't freeze the budget, then when we use it in the following fiscal year, I don't have that money. If I use some of those funds to fill this hole. And not taking into consideration the $910,000 of the line of credit. And just leave it completely off the table.
Yeah, if you, if you do leave that off, we could run into, there's a chance of.
If you leave it off, yeah. And I've always been told, and Commissioner Nelson's the one that always brings it up, we need to be real careful on the 910 that we're not using it to operate off of.
You've got the 910 in this budget. You have 910 that you should be bringing over from the payoff of the, uh, the Westgate when we get reimbursed.
Correct.
Plus the 910 here, that gives you $1.8 million.
We got two 910s?
We did 910 last year that we put into Westgate that we're gonna get reimbursed for.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
It's gonna come back.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Plus the 910 in this year's budget. Even 1.8 made it back.
So we're drawing the 910 now?
I'm just, I'm not saying we're drawing it. I'm saying, okay.
We got it.
Before you go, then you have the money we set aside for the taxing creep for the Westgate, which was an additional $400 and something thousand dollars.
Four and twenty-five. Like 386,000.
Okay, 386.
Okay, sure.
So that gives you.
Is there a method to print out the budget in terms of just general categories? Like how much the county spends for office supplies, training, that kinda stuff?
Sure, we could pull up something like that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So those two, that 910, plus the 910, plus you have another $600,000 that you're gonna add as a line of credit here. That's all money sitting in the interest and sinking fund.
The 606 currently is an interest and sinking.
And the 910 is still sitting in the interest and sinking. We haven't drawn it. It's still there.
Well, correct.
The other 910 that we drew down and we have in the Westgate is somewhere else.
That one still needs to be brought to us, yeah. That would still be refunded.
So if you reduce the tax rate in the interest and sinking fund and leave this year's 910 plus the $600,000 in there, you would basically reduce the interest and sinking fund rate to zero.
You'd reduce it and it would, it would make us famous this year, yes.
Yes.
And then you could.
But you would have a zero rate, which then would bring over four cents, which then your bonding companies would all go nuts.
We would have to look into that. I mean, there are some entities that do finance, uh, DSF just transfers. So we could look into that.
If you move four cents over to the, to the general fund, it gives you about $800,000.
Correct.
And revenue. So if you went three cents of that and left a penny there, that leaves you about $600,000.
Yes. Yes.
And then take these lines of credits, let them roll over and use those beginning cash balances to balance your interest and sinking fund.
What do you mean roll? Oh, roll, let them roll over? Keep them in finance?
Yes. Right?
Absolutely.
And then there's no capital in this budget anymore.
There's no capital.
What I was getting at, Commissioner Owen, is that the 910, the first 910 that we're going to be reimbursing?
Yeah.
That one right there, we're gonna have to be real careful if we don't do something with this year's budget because that 910's fixing to get up. When it gets reimbursed, we'll eat it up with this budget. We're not gonna have it next year.
No, 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 I clearly understand that. It won't be there. And I wanna see the special funds along with this. And we can have some bigger discussions, but I would like to look at at least a 5% that have to raise and do a freeze on everything.
Hiring expenditures.
5% and, uh, 5% and raises right off the bat, that's 500 and. 600, right? 600 and 4,000? Yeah, 350 plus 254, 600 and 4,000.
And I know there's still some need. Aaron needs to move his part-time to a full-time. Jerry needs somebody to take the books because, well, I can't do it anymore. And then there were some other things. The vest for the sheriff, he's got some needs over there. We still have those, um, that we still have to plug into this.
The, the treasurer secretary, with where she's at right now, if you added her, the clerk to, uh, versus the money she's getting paid right now, that's about a $13,604 increase. And then the vest, we were talking somewhere in the $41,000, but half of that might be able to come back to us. The secretary for Jerry, uh, if we were to hire a full-timer, it's $31,370. And I think the idea that you threw up this morning as we were visiting, maybe to give ours a little bit more money in order to.
Take over all of this.
Take over Jerry's stuff and that probably, well, that'd save us at least $20,000.
If we raised our secretary's pay and let her take over the reporting for Jerry, that would save quite a bit of money.
That'd save over $20,000.
If you raised hers by 10 and she took over all of that, and that would save you the difference in that all.
There is a.
Somebody's gonna have to do it. It has to get done and somebody has to do it.
There is a, uh, the fire responded. We're gonna leave that in there to pay off. It was in our budget.
We haven't ever spent it.
So, I mean, I guess my deal would be is if we leave it in this next fiscal year, it stays there. But if we don't, that actually, that money there would make up for the secretary, make up for the treasurer, part of the vest.
Well, we've never spent it, so, I mean, we could utilize it to, to offset the salary to handle the payroll.
It could, we could, we give him maybe a, if he's gonna do the numbers, it'd be nice if he had some type of directive to work. We took that out and we set the secretary of ours right now, give her a little bit more money, sort of, and then we take out of that 25 and take out that 13 for.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have you put in $10,000 for the commissioner's secretary to take over the, uh, paperwork for the fire department, to put in the vest that the sheriff needs and to, and Aaron's from part-time to full-time.
And that, and that, we're, yeah, in a minute. And then the 25, that 25, uh, taken out as rep, uh.
An expenditure.
And that'll make up.
Part of it.
That'll make up a bunch of those three items. Uh, and, and I, and one of the main things, again, on the vest, I mean, they have a life expectancy, uh, and we're sitting up here, I think, trying to prioritize our, our expenses. So, I mean, those actually have a life expectancy and we're, we're there, I think, pretty close. So I, I think they need to.
Take that money out of the, since we're gonna, if we roll that money back into the interest and sinking fund, take it out of the interest and sinking fund as a capital expenditure out of the interest and sinking. And since you have, if you leave your 910 and your $600,000 in there, take it out of there instead of the general fund. You can do it on like a lease purchase or some sort of.
I don't know if we can do those on a lease purchase.
Jerry, you can. There's capital leases all the time. You can buy stuff. You just can't amortize it for more than the life of the, the, uh. No, we still have to make up the, the other 50%. And you're gonna have to write the check for the whole thing until you get your, your 50% back. There's leasing companies that will let you do a, a one-time lease or, or if it makes you feel better, we can set up a, a line of credit for 20,000 to borrow down and then pay it back off. What I'm saying is take it out of interest and sinking instead of out of the general fund.
Commissioner, I mean, that's a good idea, but, I mean, if it's only gonna be 20,000, couldn't we lower our contingency from 5 to 4?
You can do it either way.
And I'm just saying, because we're probably gonna need the rest of it before we get.
Sorry, I think it's gonna be 40,000.
It is 40,000, but at the end of the day, we should get 20 reimbursed, 50% of it.
We should get 40 reimbursed.
Correct?
No, it's 20,000.
My understanding, it was 41,000 or something for the vest and then we'd get 50% of it reimbursed.
That's easy then.
Yeah, so 40,000 to buy everything you need.
What you see on the, on the paper is we wanted to do half. That's what you're seeing. It's half this year.
If you can plug those numbers in.
And I think we haven't, and we haven't really, we haven't created any debt. We still have the interest and sinking that we're probably gonna end up with anyway.
The main emotion, anybody sticking up?
One more, one more item that we need to make a realignment on precinct one foreman. He's presently at $45,700. The other foreman at $58,200. And, uh, he should be raised up to, uh, like $52,000. And, uh, he's a proven foreman. He's, he's passed, uh, he's gone through the preliminary six months and 20 years' experience. He's an excellent, excellent foreman and I'd like to add that to that motion if possible.
I can't do that, but I mean, it depends on the court. Just one of five.
You wanna?
We actually went through and said.
We had this discussion once. You did it.
There's a base pay.
Well, there wasn't a base pay.
Well, it is for any new foreman or anybody.
I don't agree with that.
That's fine. You don't have to agree with it, but.
I'm not getting mad. It's just a vote. I, I, I can't do that.
Let's, uh, let's keep the motion and then Commissioner Wardlaw, if you wanna make a second motion, we can do that.
Okay, let's vote on this one first. Okay, there's a motion and a second by Commissioner Owens. Katie, right? Anybody else wanna make a comment? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nobody? 5-0. All right, Commissioner Wardlaw?
I'd like to make the motion that precinct one foreman, uh, be changed to $52,000.
There's a motion and a second.
I'm gonna second that because I, I don't agree with what we did two years ago.
There is a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. 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 All those opposed?
I oppose, Judge.
Opposed?
I don't think it's right.
Opposed? 3-2. Okay, okay. All right.
Judge, there's one more on your, the one for, uh, we added $6,000, I think, for emergency management. I'd make a motion to take that out.
Okay.
To take out the $6,000.
Okay, there's a motion. I think the thing about, the thing about it, the thing about that one was that they, they were supposed to take it out. We were supposed to take it out of my.
Yeah, he's still getting the money. I mean, we don't allow other people to move money within their budget to pay the payroll. And what, the way, I voted the last time. I've been thinking about it and I just can't do it. So I made a motion. I'll go second.
Second?
I don't think it's right. We're telling everybody else not to move money, not to do this. We're gonna have more people come up to us wanting to move money within their budgets in order to pay for payroll and all this. I mean, it's just, I mean, I just might believe.
You know, I got something to say there to people on, Commissioner. I think that if we're gonna give certain people, certain races, it's unfair to the rest of the, of our employees. I think it should be a cause and board. There's gonna be a percentage or an amount. But we're not gonna start picking here and there, you know, who we're gonna give races to. Not when the budget is critical as y'all have been stating. I, I think this ain't, I'm doing.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. What is the motion? The motion is to do away with $6,000 for emergency management coordinator.
Roma's done a good job in PR on the projects that I've had in motion. He's done an excellent job. And I think we need somebody that knows PR.
It's just a vote. I mean, the people who know.
One audit.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Two seconds.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So when can we have the special fund budgets so we can start reviewing them?
I can get hopefully that data by the end of the week. Now, what are our thoughts on the spending freeze?
We don't have an item to discuss a spending freeze, so if you're gonna do one, we need to do it Monday.
No, I wasn't gonna do it. I just thought you're.
I think you need, I think you need to start taking a series, look at it. I think we need to start having that discussion. I would recommend we put an item on the agenda Monday to have that discussion.
I asked him also to put an item on the agenda for the 910 to figure out what we're gonna do with it.
And then what's our process is for, I know we have a timeline and a process that we have to go through on this budget. Depending upon what we.
We have a public hearing on Monday. He's coming on. And then we also have a budget, budget work here. All right. All right. Next, anybody else? Nobody? All right, next we're gonna do item 11.
Judge, I think it's Monday one at a time.
You know, I'm very, very appreciative to the family. I, I just. I just wanted to say, you know, running the second biggest department and being the lowest paid department head, I'm used to that. I'm in a field that's traditionally dominated by women. But I don't think anybody that works at the library should be making $7,000 a cent a hour. So that's at the very, very least, um, what I was requesting from this staff.
Thank you.
But they're part-time?
Look, that's what the department.
Yeah, they're part-time. There's not full-time county employees because they should be making somewhere around $11 minimum. So they're part-time?
They are.
Okay.
But they've got bachelors to prove.
No, I'm just saying, they're part-time, but they're not full-time county employees.
True.
Just making.
Okay, okay. So that's a separate issue.
All right. Next, we're gonna go item 11. Uh, gonna executive session pursuant to the text document code 551.071, parentheses 2. No, we're gonna go executive session.
Do we have anything for executive session?
Yeah.
Do it?
Yeah. Mr. Palia's 10, 10. No action was taken. There any more discussion? If not, this means adjourned.